Good evening. I would like to call to order the West Springfield School Committee meeting for September 14th, 2021. Karen, would you please take the role?
Yes, Karen Garbasik.
Here.
Holly Marcus.
Here.
Jennifer Marcus.
Here.
Daniel Leveres.
Here.
Neil Garvey.
Here.
Mrs. Carroll.
Here.
Would everyone please stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is school committee reports of the subcommittees. So the first one is budget, and I'm the chair of the budget committee, so I'll give that report first. The budget subcommittee met several times during July, August, and September. We have worked on discussions of budgetary items, including clubs, additional personnel, grants, and a review of the 2021 fiscal year. Next is curriculum. Mrs. Marcus?
There is nothing to report. Our last curriculum meeting was at the end of May, and I reported on that in June. We don't have one scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Facilities, Mrs. Garbasik.
Yes, members of the school committee took a tour of all the school buildings, and we were happy to see that, you know, the facilities are in good order. We also discussed during the tour, you know, things that needed to be taken care of. We do have an upcoming facilities meeting to be scheduled this Thursday.
Thank you. Policy, Mrs. Leveres.
It's just a work in progress.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Connor?
Thank you, Mrs. Farrell. Just want to give an update on the opening, which very pleased to say went as smooth as possible. We didn't really know what we were walking into this year, obviously with everything, but the principals, the teachers, the parents and the kids were, everybody was ready and set to go. We continue to work on some busing issues, and we'll get that continued to get squared away. We have a couple of things that we're going to be trying at the middle school, between middle school and Fozzie, which is one of our big bottlenecks right now. Also, I'm happy to announce that we'll be looking at the campus layout for possible redesign of Fozzie parking lot as well as Tatum. And so this will go into design this year with the hope, some summer work, to get those redesigned for more efficiency around drop off and pickup with an eye on safety, obviously. And also, when we look at, like, for example, the Tatum asphalt around the entire building needs a lot of work, and so that'll all come up, and we'll repave that whole area as well. So looking forward to that work this coming year. And a big thank you to the mayor and Doug Mattoon and the DPW for the work on that. Update on the dashboard, COVID positive dashboard. The state began collecting positive cases again. So you may have remembered that they paused this over the summer, at the end of last year, actually. They reinstituted the dashboard. This is something that we'll be adding to every Wednesday at 5:00, and we'll be posting this on our website by school and grade level, so folks will be able to tune in and get that week's update of positive cases. Additionally, update on the testing. We, it's been a challenge. I was with the commissioner on Friday where he was talking about the challenges with working with the company to get this rolled out across the state. Massachusetts is the first state to do this. It's a heck of a task for this company. But I'm proud to say that we have been, we have identified who our company representative is, which not everybody has that, not every district has that yet. Our kids just came in, and so now we're just waiting on the training of our nurses. And once we have that up, the test and stay will be ready to go, which will be a big help for us. We are seeing an uptick in COVID cases, but we're maintaining, and the nurses and the faculty staff and the parents have been great. Kids are doing a great job wearing their masks, same with faculty and staff. So we keep adding as many mitigation strategies as possible to, again, keep people safe, but also keep them in school. And that is all I have right now. Thank you.
Any questions from committee members for the superintendent? Mrs. Marcus?
Superintendent Connor, I know you just mentioned about training the staff, specifically the nurses. Do we have any other staff members that will be trained on the testing?
Yeah, thank you. We will be training also our isolation room monitors as well, who will assist in that process as well. We have sent out the approval forms to all the parents. They have been translated. We're going to continue to send that out. We haven't had a great response, but certainly, I'm sure there will be some conversations should we need it with parents who may opt in at that time as well.
Just one question that I had, since the testing program is not up and running, I would assume we don't have the test and stays, so students who are close contacts, are they now?
Quarantined.
Quarantined?
Correct. Correct, yeah.
So it would be very helpful if, once we get the program running, if the students can then stay in school using the program?
Absolutely. And the schools have been doing a great job. You drive by any one of our schools, you know, the big issue is lunch, where obviously we're taking masks off. But schools have been doing a great job getting outside and using the tents and other spaces outside. You go by the high school, at lunchtime, the kids are out there, they're having a great time out there. We got to get them to clean up a little more. But besides that, they have adapted well. Kids are resilient, and so they adapt well.
Mrs. Leveres?
Do you know how long it will take for it to be up and running? And if parents opt out, can they take their kids privately to be tested?
They can. They can take them privately and bring that data back. Also, in terms of getting, I'm hoping within the next two weeks. There is a training that they all have to go through. You've got to get their hands on the training and then get that to the 14 nurses.
Okay.
One other question that I had. If a parent does not opt into the testing program and then their child is a close contact, will they be called and given the option of opting into test and stay?
Yeah, so they'll be notified that their son or daughter is a close contact, and there will be that discussion at the time. Obviously, there's still the consent that needs to be signed off, and so that's something that they'll be able to do at that time. And I'm thinking that's when some of the folks will participate in that as well. And additionally, one piece I missed is, we need the certification from the school physician to carry out, so that the school physician has to sign off on the testing protocols. And so there was a conversation this evening, hoping it went well, haven't heard yet, with our school physician and Mrs. Beaumont.
Mrs. Marcus?
So parents can opt in at any time?
And opt out at any time.
And opt out, okay.
So, and if, you know, if, you know, right now, the state is asking us or directing us that you sign up for all three of the testing protocols. But if a parent is called and their child is a close contact and they want to do test and stay, but also is being asked to do, say, pool testing, they can opt out of that as well.
Any other questions from committee members? Thank you, Superintendent Connor. The next item is presentations. Superintendent Connor, would you like to introduce this?
Absolutely. Thank you. So our first presentation, what we wanted to do is invite, we had Mrs. Brennan who fell ill, so she won't be joining us this evening, so we have Dr. Guile as well as Dr. Perone, who will be presenting. What we wanted to do is give you an update on how our summer programming went. This was something unique because of COVID. It's also something that we may want to consider carrying pieces of this forward into summer programs, both at the Boys and Girls Club as well as Park and Rec in future years, because we had some really, really good success in some of it. And other pieces, we probably would tweak or even remove, so I'll turn it over to the doctors.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Guile and I worked together with the program directors of Parks and Rec and the Boys and Girls Club to infuse educators into the programming for the summer. And I shared an update with you about mid-range through the summer programs, and they were going very well. But afterwards, what we wanted to do was debrief with the program directors and find out what were the grows or the glows and the grows for those programs in the summer. And I think it's integral to note that our SEL director, our curriculum director, worked hand in hand with those directors to really make sure that those programs were doing the best that they could to meet the needs of our students in the summer after that last school year. So maybe, Dr. Guile, you want to talk a little bit about that meeting we had?
Yeah, I would be remiss if we didn't talk a few moments about how open-minded Parks and Rec and the Boys and Girls Clubs were with respect to working with us. Going into the summer, we knew we wanted to support students as best we could. Trying to figure out the best way to do that was a challenge, and so we're truly grateful for their flexibility and willingness to work with us. And frankly, this has developed into what we hope will be a continual relationship, ongoing relationship. So that being said, we came together, we debriefed as a collective group, talked a lot about how beneficial the, how beneficial it was to have staff, highly educated staff onsite to work with, whether it was the counselors through the Parks and Rec, who tend to be younger, high school, college age, or folks at the Parks and Rec, excuse me, Boys and Girls Club. So just having that institutional knowledge and expertise was most appreciated. And, yeah, please.
One thing I'd like to add, our ideal, we had kind of an ideal of what this was going to be, and it was going to be Westside teachers and counselors working with those programs. They know the students. And unfortunately, in the real world, those teachers were kind of burnt out by the year that they had, by the challenges that they faced. So we were able to get a couple of teachers from Westside, but we also got some teachers from other school districts, all certified. We did have counselors from the district, and that was hugely important because the students were struggling after what they faced. And 100% support from both of the program directors and their people who recognized the need to meet the kids where they were with respect to social emotional health. And when we talked about what we could do better or what could be done better, we thought about that tier-one support on the SEL level. And what I mean by that is, all students need some support when we think about the year that they faced. And then some students need some interventions, and that's really what we were able to provide. And so as we move forward, the recommendation that we would make is somehow, some way, we have to find a way to support the collaboration between Parks and Rec, Boys and Girls Club, and the West Springfield Public Schools, because it only benefits our students. Now, that being said, in the Parks and Rec side, we wanted to bring and infuse, if we could do this again, more specialists, active, fun, kind of outdoorsy stuff into the program, as opposed to the Boys and Girls Club where they have a curriculum, which is called Brain Games, right? And that was more academic. So we would kind of differentiate the support and the infusion that we brought to the programs based on the programs as they were developed.
I think, I think too, a aha moment for, I think, everybody was the importance of the social emotional learning and making sure the experiences were meaningful, purposeful, highly engaging. So as Dr. Perone is talking, it's reminding me of one of those main takeaways or grows would be to really bring in those content specialists, as he's already mentioned, who can take the kids or take the students and do activities that are tailored to their area of expertise, whether that's art, music, and so forth. So really, making a more robust and well-rounded experience, I think, is definitely the main takeaway that we had coming out of that meeting. And, yeah, I think the other piece too would be recognizing that more prep time is needed. And when I say prep time, leading up to the actual camp experience would be appreciated, where this year, folks coming in for the first time only had 48 hours business days, you know, two business days to really get ready for this experience. And in hindsight, we needed more time to really process, do that curriculum mapping and planning that was required. So committing to that was a really important thing to all parties in this conversation.
Yeah, if I could just jump in there also. I know the Park and Rec director pretty well, and she couldn't say enough about the work that our folks did with their folks. This year, they had a very, very young counseling staff going into a very, very difficult year, not knowing, you know, where kids were at. And so very much appreciated the social emotional learning side of things and really helped out. And when we look at this program, we're not looking at it from, you know, this is a school thing, this is a Park and Rec thing, this is a Boys and Girls Club thing. They're all our kids. They just happen to go to different places for two months. But at the end of the day, those are all our kids coming back to the exact same spots, which is West Springfield Public Schools. So I love the idea, and I hope we can continue to support this going forward, because I think it is important for the growth of our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to comment, the feedback that I received from parents was all very positive. Their students were, they felt engaged in the program and happy going to the programs that they were involved in. I'm just kind of surprised that you don't have math as one of the content specialists of active learning, because I could certainly think of many active learning math activities to do. So maybe we can add that next year to the, to the program. So any other comments by any other school committee members or questions? Mrs. Garbasik?
Yes, I just want to thank everybody involved for the wonderful opportunities our kids have had this summer. It's nice to see the town united to support our kids. Thank you both. Thank you all.
Any other questions? Mr. Garvey?
Thanks, Mrs. Farrell. Thank you both. One thing I often talk about is trying to take some positives out of COVID, like, to really pay attention to the things that work, even in the things that we hate doing, whatever that is, you know what I mean? Looking at remote education in that way. And this is one where I see, to me, I don't want to oversimplify this, but this does feel like a no-brainer, because, boy, if we can have continuity with staff going, traveling, you know what I mean, with kids going from transitioning to different grades of seeing those folks in the summer. But the other thing we learned from COVID is the challenges of employment as well. So we really do need some creative thinking, and this is not the only time I'm missing the mayor, but I would love to see, because, again, this is different, you know, this is not all in the school department, there's different folks at different places, but this is something worth committing to. And so I thank you for that, and I think it's really something we should all try to see go further in the future. So thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Just to piggyback on Bill's silver linings of COVID, you know, sometimes these things come up and you think, why didn't we do this before? This is one of these, like, why didn't we ever think of this before? And the Boys and Girls Club program and the Park and Rec program, they're very different programs. So, you know, looking at the glows and grows, I'm sure they're different for each program. I mean, when I think of Park and Rec, I think of kids, there are some students that go every week, and there are others that go the first week and the third week. So it's exciting to think about what this is going to look like in the future, and I certainly, I echo the sentiment that, again, you know, a no-brainer, why didn't we think of it before? And moving forward, it's very exciting. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. So I think you're moving on to the acceleration roadmap progress?
So if I could just jump in again. So the state came out with a document, acceleration roadmap document, that was designed to help school districts plan for this upcoming school year, not in terms of necessarily reteaching, but more looking at skill sets and how we move kids quicker through that, hopefully that gap achievement. And so I can't thank Dr. Guile enough, Ms. Brennan enough, for the work that they have done on this. They pulled together a group of educators over the summer at each building, who absolutely just absolutely crushed it and allowed our teachers to walk in the door with a plan, how we are going to address these gaps. And they didn't just throw the 28-page document at the teacher and say, good luck. They boiled it down to focal points, and they also developed a timeline, knowing that this wasn't a September thing. This is going to be a two- and three-year thing. So thank you to Dr. Guile, thank you, Dr. Perone, and Mrs. Brennan.
So before we give Dr. Guile the stage, I do want to say one thing, though, Tim, and you're very gracious with your commendations of us, but I want to commend you because the district improvement plan that was worked on by the committee that we had came out before the roadmap did. But the strategic objectives of that district improvement plan mirror the priorities here very strongly. And so the work that you led with us as a committee to do the district improvement plan really set the stage foundationally for our district to be ready for this. So commendation to you too.
Thank you. Call me Dr. Connor Fernella.
So in the spirit of the district improvement plan, I just, I went ahead in the presentation a few slides just to really reinforce that message that Dr. Perone just made. It was almost serendipity to a certain degree, where here we were doing all of this work all last winter going into the spring. We create three priority strategic objectives that focus on family, focus on data, and focus on strong instruction. Fast forward to, I feel it was end of May, the Department of Education releases their tool, if you will, and Superintendent Connor was right, it's a 27-page document filled with just amazing resources. I actually initially didn't think that, but after really diving deeply into it, I came to appreciate the value of it. However, it's incredibly overwhelming. So then the question that we had as a central office team was, how do we best provide this content to our colleagues, our staff, that will not send everybody over the edge? So really, that's when the work began. From that, we, within each building, created acceleration roadmap teams. Each building then met, whether it was with me or with the principal, there was always an administrator part of that meeting, but the work was really focused on the acceleration roadmaps priorities, which had to do with creating a sense of belonging, monitoring student progress, and looking at strong instruction. So that was really our overarching, or the overarching priorities, fitting beautifully together with the district improvement plan. As we were doing that work, as we were doing that work, what became very clear was this idea that whether we're working on sense of belonging and classroom management or behavioral management, or we're working on academics, that the two worlds coexist and merge and work in unison. So it then became really about how do we look at our culture and climate within each building, and then look at what are those best practices so that we can launch into the school year with really a toolkit of best practices for the academics, and also revisiting what are those PBIS, responsive classroom practices that really create a positive culture? So as you see on the screen, those were our objectives. Jen Brennan, just to give a shout out to her, unfortunately can't be here, but she took the sense of belonging and ran with it with PBIS committees within each building. A lot of those members also were part of the committees focused on best practices for monitoring progress and looking at strong instruction. So the end result was during, during the second, it was the 31st, second day of professional development, each building with their committee jumped into great conversation and dialogue about, you know, what does it mean to create a sense of belonging? What does it mean to engage families? What does strong instruction look like? And what was tremendous about it is a lot of, a lot of the resources we already had access to. It was a matter of us revisiting those, pulling those out, because we'd been in such a state of, what, emotional reaction due to the pandemic. So it was almost refreshing to really see folks say, all right, yeah, we got this, we understand this, we know what we need to do. And so, again, what we focused on for sense of belonging was that idea of building relationships, you know, really defining behavior, teacher expectations, embracing the positive, and really making sure that praise to correction ratio was in place. And so then with monitoring understanding, it was again about what do we do well to understand that a student gets it? And instead of looking at it from maybe a summative or end-of-unit standpoint, it's reminding ourselves that constantly assessing students and monitoring their understanding is going to be critical in this whole experience as we try to address a very diverse need within our student population. So we posed a series of questions. And then for strong instruction, they talk a lot about this idea of, you know, just-in-time scaffolds. And this whole idea of acceleration was really born out of this idea that we can't afford to hit pause and remediate and go and just really go back. We have to be able to go forward, and we go forward by providing students with the curriculum, age level. age level curriculum, but we also need to know where are they relative to that? And then you build in those adjusted differentiated practices to meet their needs, all the while exposing them to that grade level curriculum. So that was a lot. We, we, we literally, we, we launched that and the way the, the state talks about it is we were in planning launching phase. Now, I say now, around November, we get into reflect stage. And so what we're looking at is for the November PD Day, it's not quite set in stone yet, but it would be an opportunity for us to pause and reflect, to adjust. The committees are going to meet again in a couple of weeks as promised and we committed to this work being ongoing. We're going to debrief, get feedback from everybody, recognize what worked well, what didn't, and then we as committees will adjust and put forth recommendations as to how we can best maximize the professional development time. So all in all, it's, it's, it's been a remarkable experience. The, the committees have exceeded expectations in terms of what the products would look like. They, they just completely embraced this and I think it's reflected in, in what you see today in terms of our, our positive start. Yep, sorry.
So I have to say, you know, Neil, very humble, but he's, he was masterful in how he thematically presented this to the faculty because there was that fear that we all had when we saw this, that it was going to blow us up, it's going to be too much. But he focused on, I would say, three things: cohesiveness, authenticity, and relevance. And when those three things got trans, communicated to the committees and they started working on it, then the light bulb went off for them. And that's when the, the work that they did reflected in the authenticity of the product that came out of it. And so I, I have to say that this work now is meaningful. It's not just a dust collector that's going to sit on a shelf. It is practice that our teachers are going to use. And then with a growth mindset, we're going to think about reflecting in November, how can we tweak it, edit it, and move forward to the benefit of our students, to the benefits of our programs and our practice?
If I can add to that.
Sure.
So what we have decided through a great idea from Dr. Perone is to kind of make this a little more fun for us is the central office team is going to be going out to schools and generally we do walkthroughs and things like that. But this year, we're going to do a scavenger hunt, not as a gotcha by any means, really just to kind of see and identify the areas both within the district improvement plan, the school improvement plan, and the work that's happening with the acceleration roadmap as, as kind of a celebration for all the work that they did. And when I say that the products that these committees, these teachers created were exemplars, we easily could have put it out to the state and they would have absorbed it in a second. It was that good. It was just phenomenal work. So thank you for your leadership on that. Thank you to all the teachers that participated.
So my comments, thank you. I can see like one and two, I can see how you can develop those skills. Having been a teacher in a former life, I look at number three and I go that instruction in the classroom, you know, kind of to be teaching the standards for the grade level and to fill in. And it's good to hear that you're going to go back and look at this in November again and kind of see what's happening. Like to me, like it's all hard work for teachers, there's no doubt about that. But like, kind of to fill in the gaps and still continue with the grade level instruction seems like overwhelming task. My other comment is it's so nice to hear that our district improvement plan totally aligned with what Desi says. I guess my fear in that is that they'll come and try to recruit our superintendent again to become an associate commissioner when they find out like we were, we were one step ahead of them again, so hopefully.
Inside word, that's not going to happen.
Hopefully that won't happen. Any questions or comments from other members? Mrs. Marcus?
So I'm pretty familiar with the acceleration roadmap and it is 28 pages long, but there are literally hundreds of links, hundreds of links to great documents, which in many districts, it becomes just that. It's, it's, it's great, but how are we going to do this? And I have to agree with Tim. The work that you and the, the teachers and committees within the district have done thus far to embrace this and, and make it work with what is currently working within West Springfield is amazing, exemplary. Kudos to you because again, it is a daunting, excellent document, but a daunting document. And teachers embracing the positive, looking at it as not another new thing. Again, I look forward to seeing this unfold as the year progresses. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from committee members? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you everyone.
Next on our agenda, Dr. Perone on the Coburn School Project.
So I asked the, the OPM, our owner's project manager, to provide us with some pictures, some photos, just to give you guys something to look at as the project evolves. So those we can, I can scroll through. But, but I did want to just first start with, with these bullets. The project is progressing as well, it's on schedule. The excitement that you see in the teachers and the administration. Oh, sorry. I got scolded. The excitement you see in the teachers and the administration and the students as that building starts to take shape and the shell starts to be added to it is just, it's palpable when you walk through. So it's, it's really pretty amazing. We went on a couple of tours and got inside the building. Pretty soon, by December, the building's roof is going to be impermeable and as we move through the winter, the, the exterior will be done and then they're going to start with the interior and really developing the different spaces within the building. So as you walk through the building now, you can see the, the superstructure, the, the metal framing, and it's starting to show the gym and the cafeteria and the stage and the different programs and classrooms. So it's really quite exciting. If, if, if there's a desire, we could probably schedule another tour as, as the project develops into the fall, I would say. So just let me know, Ms. Connor, and I will make sure that I work with Michael and NV5 to get that happening. The, I mean, I, I guess I'd, I'd just like to show some of the pictures. And you know, just, it just, as you look at the, the exterior of the building, they, they starting to put these impermeable and the, I don't even know what they're called anymore. Can it, can you see that over there? Air vapor, there you go. The air vapor barriers are on there. So the, you can start seeing the, the shape of the building. This one kind of reminds me, it seems like the Colosseum in Rome. I don't know why, but it's not, of course, but it's, it certainly is exciting to see the shape of the building and the structure as it's developed. When you start going inside and seeing the stairs and the, the main hallways and the spaces that our principals and students and teachers are going to be in, it really is pretty amazing. The different subcontractors are active and, and every day getting busy and it's just an exciting time to be a part of the project. I'll take any questions you have. I don't know that I have all the answers, but if you ask a question, I don't have the answer, I'll make sure and get it and share it with you.
Thank you. Just for me, like driving down Westfield Street, Route 20 in the kind of scene, CVS, and then where you can see the building and it's so exciting to see it there. I think Mr. Connor mentioned one day if we could have the name of the school written there so like we could see Coburn School as you're coming down the hill, like that would be a great thing. So any questions or comments by committee members? Mrs. Garbasa?
Just a comment about the third picture. The picture appears, looks like the building has a curve.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
It, it looks that way. I think it's just the perspective because again, I saw it too and I said, ah, it looks like the Colosseum and you know, that curved structure.
I just don't recall.
It's, it's not. It's just a.
Panoramic view.
I'm looking at it and I'm going like, I don't recall it being curved, you know.
No.
And just so the viewers know, it won't be a purple school either.
No. It's very exciting.
Mrs. Marcus?
So we, we talked about silver linings of COVID. This is something that makes me a little sad with COVID because I think we need to bring pictures forward maybe every other meeting. You know, this is truly an amazing project and we haven't celebrated as much as we typically would and I think, you know, you know, there have been higher priorities, but I, I really feel that, I've had the opportunity to be inside it and it is truly an amazing building and something we are all going to be very proud of.
When you said that, it sparked a memory that we have that time lapse ability. We can, we can, I'll work with NV5 and there's a camera that's documenting everything from day one till day now. So I can work with them to get for the next presentation, a time lapse of the project.
Yeah, I think that would be wonderful.
So I will definitely do that.
Through the chair, just, and as, as excited as we're getting for the new building, the bittersweet of Mrs. Marcus who spent so much time at the old building and some of us who went through that as a junior high and have memories. So we certainly want to capture that historical piece of that and we do have a gentleman who's going to be doing that for the inside of the building. But I would like to have opportunities for the community who went to the junior high or Coburn to, to take a walk through before, you know, before it comes down.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Perone.
You're welcome.
The next item is approval of open session minutes from August 17th, 2021. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the open session minutes from our August 17th, 2021 meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous affirmative. Next, business managers' report. Ms. Hunter?
So we met, as you know, and we have one item on the agenda and that is to increase a current speech language pathologist position. That's currently .2 FTE in addition, to an additional .2 FTE to make her a .4 for the current school year. The funding will come out of the SPED 240 grant.
So the budget subcommittee did meet on this. We approved this unanimous affirmative at the budget subcommittee and this two tenths to four tenths was also for the 19, no, 2021 school year. So we did have it in place last year and it was needed this year. So I'll make a motion to increase current SLP FTE from two tenths to four tenths for school year 2021, 2022. The additional cost of $16,472.60 will be charged to the Special Education IDE Fund 240 entitlement grant. Any questions that are, welcome, Mr. Manucci, our new SPED director is here this evening, first time at a meeting with us. So welcome to West Springfield. Any questions that anyone has? So all in favor of, oh, did we have a second yet?
I second it.
All in favor? Unanimous affirmative. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Anyone from the public like to speak this evening? State your name and your address when you come up to the microphone.
There's a sheet, there's actually a sheet up here. Sorry about that.
Love the term glows and grows. I have not actually heard that before. It's, I like it. A quick question, just with regard to the content specialist that you mentioned for the summer programming, which sounded really interesting. I know the feedback form went out regarding the ESSER funding. Is this an opportunity to perhaps provide feedback to see if any of the funding could go towards this kind of summer programming and either expansion or addition of resources?
Yeah, I think the, the ESSER funding, though not specifically labeled in there for this, this work that we, we did this summer, the ESSER funding has the flexibility to continue or increase this. ESSER three, thank you.
For the next three years.
For the next three years. So we have the ability to do that. And so we'll, I think the feedback that we got was so positive that we are moving forward with it for the next two, after this one, two more years after this and looking to expand it and then build the traction to find funding for it going forward after COVID money is depleted.
Is there still an opportunity to add comments? Like just to add?
Sure. Yeah, it's still, still open.
You know, to that, with this, learning about this.
Yep. It's still open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Our next school committee meeting is September 28th, 2021 at seven o'clock, again, here in the auditorium of the municipal office building. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So won't. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. We're adjourned.[1775.51][1775.51]